I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is our regular meeting for September, City Council. So thank you very much for coming out. We will start with. We have agendas for folks on the table. We didn't see one coming in. We have a closed session, so we'll move straight into our approval of the agenda. Councilors, are there any substantive changes to the agenda that you wish? Seeing none, any public comment on the agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion to? First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Cheryl, thank you very much. And moving on to the minutes. Looks like we have minutes from July 12th and from August 23rd. Now, I downloaded this yesterday. They said they'll be coming up. I must have to refresh my browser. So I did not have a chance to review the minutes, so I could do it right now. At this point, I'll ask, any substantive changes from the council on minutes from July 12th?
No.
No.
Any public comment on the minutes from July 12th? Okay, moving on to the minutes from August 23rd. Substantive changes from the council?
No. From the public? I would abstain, since I didn't make it to that meeting.
Okay. Any substantive changes from the public on the minutes from August 23rd? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Aye, so move. Check both. Second.
All right, first and second. I too am going to abstain, since I did not read the minutes. So we don't have enough to approve the things.
We can approve one set.
We can approve one set. Let's vote on the set from July 12th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so just because I didn't get a chance to and Cheryl wasn't there, so we'll leave the. Pardon?
Bring them back.
Bring them back, please, thank you. All right, at this point, we'll go on to council reports, committee assignments, starting with Ms. Kelly.
I do not have a report today.
Mr. Thompson?
I do not have a report.
Mr. West?
I have no report.
I feel I felt to have a report. But I do not. We met with Humble Transit Authority, but it was more, nothing substantive to report. So we'll move on. Staff reports. Mr. Now.
So I have my staff report in the packet. The cell site landscaping will be happening mid-October. The Trinidad Chamber will be having a fisherman's feast from 12 to 4 on October the 8th. They're still working on where the site would be, but it won't be in the middle of the street like the past. This will be a smaller event. We did receive a $20,000 grant from CalRecycle for the SB 1383 regarding food waste and organic waste reduction. As far as undergrounding of utilities, we have approximately $3,000. And at a future council meeting, we'll go into a little bit more detail on that subject. I had attended the CalCity's conference in Long Beach last week. It was over 2,000 attendees. And lots of good sessions. I took quite a few notes. And in upcoming meetings, I will share some of that information with the council. And then our water system, the last reading that we had last Thursday was 1.92 CFS, which is nearly double what we had last year. And in addition to that, we have been working on water leaks. There was a new one that popped up on scenic drive that was taken care of. And then there's another one at Saunders Plaza that we're currently working on. And I mentioned that Coleman Engineering is now a Times and Material contract. And as far as zoning requirements for untreated water holding tanks, our city planner looked into that, determined that even though it's in the county area, that we could have untreated water holding tanks there. And so letters will be going out. And then the city engineer is working on our 300,000 gallon steel tank, which is part of one of the grants that we received. And the State Water Resources Control Board, their engineer who oversees our water plant will be coming in early October to visit the water plant. So look forward to his visit. And then Dave had prepared the supplement to the staff report, which gets into more details as far as the creek flow. And it shows as far as our water production is down from last year and the last few years. So that's a good sign for the treatment plant, whether part of it might be because of fixing the leaks and part of it might be because of residents conserving water as they have been asked to.
That's the gist of it. I think between the governor's mandate for all Californians to march with the executive order to reduce water consumption, I've had some questions. People have asked in the office, you know, how is Trinidad relative to that mandate? So I thought this would be a good way to present some of that information for not only us as a tool to do our analysis, just so we know, but also for, you know, public transparency. They can see what our month-to-month water sales, it's water consumption, water usage. So just keep in mind that the information now put in this document is water not produced, but actually water consumed.
Oh, so this isn't, this doesn't account for leaks?
Doesn't account for leaks. It doesn't account for leaks. This is what's going through the meters.
Got it.
So this is a straightforward, you know, analysis of what the residents, the customers of the Trinidad water system are consuming. And I'm gonna, there's question marks for September 2022, October 20, and November 2022. And each month, we'll just kind of put this back in the packet. And it'll be there for anyone to see. And what I see is good. You know, when you look at this on a month-to-month basis, you know, you can see July 29th to July 2022, the water consumption has gone down from 282,000 cubic feet roughly to 198,000 progressively throughout July. You have to look at it, you know, the data on a year-by-year basis, but you also look at it on a month-to-month basis. That's kind of, you gotta really do some analysis to really understand how the city has performed. Let's just say the residents of Trinidad are performing. And everything I see in here is a real testament to what people, awareness of what people consume. It's good information.
It's encouraging. And I like that you'll continue to do this as we go through.
I'll keep adding this month as we go along through the dry season.
Assuming in November is the end of the dry season.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Or is that at the end of your time? Any questions or comments from the public? Councilors. Thank you very much for the staff reports. At this time, we will move to items from the floor. At this time, members of the public may comment on items not appearing on the agenda. Individuals' comments will be limited to three minutes or less. Please direct your comments to the council as a whole. Maintain decorum and avoid personal attacks on staff, members of the council, and/or members of the public. Council and staff responses will be limited. At this time, do we have any items from the floor?
Senator Morgan. Senator for City Council. And for Trinidad City Council 2022. So letter based on what happened last council meeting, which I was completely in shock of. And I know I wanted to thank Councilman West, saying I wasn't able to get in touch with him. But he does want to bring this back to the council and discuss the lottery since beginning. So I'll read this real quick. So distasteful and unfair, August Trinidad City Council Powerball Clown Show. The Trinidad City Council clown show of representing homes and their families with spinning balls is made worse with Mayor Ladwick barking at winners and losers. This grotesque lottery for local business license is as distasteful as it is unfair. Instead of centering mayor's usual and professional behavior, wearing hoodies and flip-flops and munching nuts while leading their city meetings, he owns one of these businesses, a short-term rental. His hosting stupid powerball lotteries while supporting caps year-long waiting lists for competing STR companies seems conflicted, is wrong on many levels. Reportedly, some homeowners have been waiting five years just to apply for their short-term property license. In a recession with decades high inflation, what help does our city council offer residents and businesses struggling with higher and higher costs on living? It's clown show, increasing taxes, and a bigger spending budget. Acknowledging the highest inflation in decades, the mayor writes, quote, "That means the city needs more revenue," end quote. Quote, "It means the city needs to tighten its belt and cut spinning like the rest of us. I have a better solution that would actually help right now. Stop the games, take immediate action, give all five STR license requests a fast track, let these honorable businesses get going. Not only will this help these owners and managers, it will also help our community and get our city through this worsening economy and onto more fiscal responsibility future." Reality is, you can't tax-weighting growth. Choosing to close, cap, and restrict the same STR home to raise the taxes on isn't just a bunch of unfortunate choices. It shows incompetence. The city's council's ability to realize its incompetence should be concerning to everyone. Trinidad needs budget cuts. It needs less political STR home taxes and restrictions. This will lead to more business, more jobs, more city income. The fiscally responsible way forward is to choose exactly the opposite way this council wants chosen.
Well, we would ask that future comments or items from the floor, if Mr. Morgan are not directed at.
I have to get a quick flight to my mom's.
As a resident, I would like to ask that members of the community, please report to planning commission meetings. And I'm sorry, I was not prepared to speak. And I'm not quite sure what I'm going to say, so I'm going to just take one second. But the planning commission is the place to think about the STR lottery and the place to talk about the lottery and the different formats for how we run the STR businesses. And I would like to state very clearly, and I apologize if I'm out of line. I'm also a city resident, so please chastise me if I am out of line. But there have been multiple formats to express the appropriate way to do the lottery and the way to run the STR format. So I encourage anyone who has any feedback for those processes to go before the planning commission and lay those out and offer any feedback to the planning commission when the STR ordinance is up for review. And that is just me as a citizen and not to play quarterback at the, I guess, at the last minute. So I would encourage anyone who's listening or anybody who has any information, because as a resident, I also want the city to have revenue and want the city to have, make everyone happy. So please encourage everyone to come before the planning commission, when the STR ordinance is up for review, to make that process better. Myself included, I have some ideas as well for the lottery that I'm working on as well, both as a personal citizen as well as city staff, that I'd like to improve that process on, that I plan to take before the planning commission. I would just encourage everyone to do that as well and not necessarily come before the city council at the last minute to just. I heard. Thank you.
Thank you. And also just for folks, we will have our annual meeting where we bring the council, the commission, and the advisory committee, and the public together to review. We do this every year at the end of the, what we used to have as a busy season, seem to go all year now. But I believe in October, November, we'll have a sort of a citywide effort to review our short-term situation in its entirety, so.
Exactly, and that date is forthcoming in October, November, date to become.
There you go. Place to get involved. Thank you, Jennifer. Other items from the floor? All right, moving on to the consent agenda. My arms are getting shorter. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine by the city council and enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is requested by a council member, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. A single opportunity for public comment on the consent agenda is available. Today, it is the staff activity report, the financial statements, and the law enforcement report. Any public comment on the consent agenda? Counselor wished to pull an item?
I would move to accept the consent.
We have a first and a second to accept the consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right, moving along to our discussion-action agenda items for this evening. Our first one is regarding appointment of two council members to mediation between the city and CHRI Ancestral Society. Eli, can you please give us a little background?
There's a lawsuit that has been going on for a few years involving the city of Trinidad versus the CHRI Ancestral Society. And we had a mediation session earlier this year. And another mediation session is tentatively proposed for September 19th and 20th. Prior to council members representing the city on the mediation were Richard Clontless and Dave Grover, who have since resigned from the council. So this agenda item is to appoint two city council members. We tabled it from the last meeting since council member Gerald Kelly was not present. So this way, we have all four council members present to decide which two would serve the city in the mediation on the currently set for the 19th and 20th of September.
And can you, you've been to one of these. Could you briefly describe the role of the city council in this mediation?
Yeah, in the mediation, the last one was by Zoom. I assume this next one would be too, simply because some people are from Sacramento and so on, from different areas. So during the process, they broke up into sections and then then came back as a group. And then when they were together, either way, the council members, in addition to myself representing the city, along with our city attorney, would be asked if they had some ideas or suggestions to offer. Based, it would be based upon what would be transpiring at the meeting. And our city attorney will be able to brief the council members to bring you up to speed, since you weren't at the prior one.
That's also what I was going to ask, right? Would there be an opportunity for whoever volunteers to get up to speed on this? Okay, bringing it to the council. Does anyone on the council have any questions regarding what would be involved in signing up for this?
I guess I just, I was curious if TAS had asked for any specific council members? If they have a preference, I'd be curious about that.
Yeah, for this particular thing, because it's a lawsuit, it's entirely up to the city to choose whoever we would have.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, any interest from the council to be a member of the mediation? Any interest in this? This is not appropriate place for me to. I got the first meeting, I'll be out of the area.
I'm sorry, I'm having a really hard time hearing you guys. I don't know if it's the, an audio issue on my end or in the room, but I will go as always to where the need is greatest. So if you, if you need a second person, Steve, I'm happy to volunteer. But if somebody in the room has already volunteered, that's, that's great as well.
Jack West recused himself and Jack Tuttle is not available on those dates, so.
Okay, and may I ask, what were the dates again? I apologize, you guys, I've got a bad cold. I just didn't want to share it with everybody.
19th and 20th of September of this one.
Okay, all right, I'm available, so I'm happy to volunteer for that with, along with you, Steve.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Kelly. Any public comments on this?
Good evening, everyone. Jackie Hoster-Carmison, CEO, Trinidad Rancheria. I just want a clarification on which lawsuit this mediation is going to be occurring for.
There's only one lawsuit that's remaining from that group with the CHRI. So it's the same one that I think was in February or somewhere around there. You were present and, yeah, Tim was present and so on. So it's that same one for that mediation.
It's the multi-government lawsuit, which it wasn't clear.
Right, yeah, so in this lawsuit, we've got the city, the CHRI, the Rancheria, the Coastal Commission, and the Coastal Conservancy.
Right, so will you be mediating with each party? Why are you just mediating? Because, I mean, it could be just a timing issue, because we haven't heard anything. It hasn't gone back for formal mediation through the courts yet. So I'm just curious.
So those dates might not be the dates that'll end up happening. When I last checked with Russ Gans, before our last meeting, he had indicated that it was still on. I told him it was tabled to this meeting. And he said that as far as he knew, it was still on for those dates. But if you said they haven't formalized it, then apparently it's not formalized yet.
Right, so I guess the clarification I need, is it just the city, only the city meeting and your attorney meeting?
No, this one would actually be for the whole group, all five. Now naturally, it will be, you know, meeting with the city attorney before, just especially to bring up the two council members up to speed.
Right.
But yeah, those dates that he gave me were the dates that all the attorneys had been talking about. Apparently, they haven't been finalized yet.
We're non-honorable, so that's why I needed the clarification.
Okay, so I'm thinking it might not be the 19th and 20th, but we'll be, we'll be, how about this, Cheryl and I will keep tabs on what the date is and whatnot.
Right, and I'll follow up through our legal counsel, too. I just thought maybe it was a separate lawsuit with just TAS and the city, so glad I caught that and asked.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other public comment regarding the appointment of two council members to mediation?
So Cheryl and who, I'm sorry?
Tony, Cheryl and I will be on the, on the city reps.
Thank you.
All right, coming back to the council then, do we have a motion to accept the two volunteers? I salute, and I'll second it. I keep looking this way and this way, guys. I don't mean to do that, it's just become muscle memory. So we have a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. All righty then, number two on our, let's see, discussion-action agenda, the presentation and discussion regarding the circulation element of the general plan update. There is Ms. Carter.
Good evening. So I have provided you with a clean version of the current draft circulation element that the planning commission has been working on over the past few months. We've been working on addressing numerous coastal commission comments on the draft and updating it with new information. It was getting a little messy to review and track changes. So there's been a lot of changes to it. We know that these latest elements we've been working on are going to go through another round of coastal commission comments. So the planning commission didn't make a recommendation to the city council at this time, but did want the city council to have an opportunity to take a look at this element and provide any feedback to staff prior to resubmitting it to the coastal commission for comment. So as you can see, the circulation element doesn't deal with simply traffic and roads. It deals also with, with public services and other things that have to do with circulation and all kinds of modes of transportation. So it's a pretty comprehensive element. We have a new set of figures there that go along with the element. And so I provided, I also provided a little bit of update on where we're at with, with other elements in my staff report, since I know there is interest in that. So you will be seeing the community design element here coming up at a future meeting soon. And the planning commission is now working on the noise element. We'll be, we'll be starting that discussion next week. So I'm happy to answer any questions or take any comments and feedback on circulation element.
Trevor, can I just ask for, just, I think for framing this discussion and all of these elements, just so everybody is kind of on the same page. When I'm looking at the document that you gave us, and I'm seeing page 48 of 110, I don't have the minutes, and this is probably a different page, but where it says CIR 1.1, CIR 1.1.1, and so on and so forth. All of these different pieces of the, of the general plan are really the starting point for anything that the city does in terms of when questions are raised about can we, can we not? What should we do with planning and so on and so forth? I just want to, I want to make sure that folks are thinking of this as a working document. And I just want to clarify, is that, is that how you as a planner and how us as city residents can look at this general plan and go to the circulation, different 1.1s, 1.2s? Say, do we have enough instructions in this thing to run the city, to change, to adapt, to? You know, if someone says, we've got a transportation problem, we would start here and see what the general plan tells us to do. Is that, is that an accurate sort of way to frame all this?
Yeah, I think that's a good summary. I think, you know, for, for people who aren't familiar with the general plan, the introduction chapter is a good starting point. Unfortunately, with the city's website, the most current versions are not up on the website again yet. So that's a little bit of a limiting factor, but certainly all, all the most recent elements are available on request. And it talks about, you know, what the goals, policies, programs all mean and what their intent is. Another complicating factor with this general plan is that it's also going to serve as the local coastal program, the land use portion of that. And the state general plan requirements are a little bit different than the coastal commission's requirements. And so we're trying to integrate the two, where the coastal commission requirements, the general plan or the land use plan is primarily to regulate coastal development permits and decisions on, on the implementation program at a zoning ordinance. But there are general plan policies that are outside the LCP as well, that kind of direct the city's actions in terms of, yeah, exactly what you said. They provide guidance in terms of what are the priority issues? And, and, you know, what direction does, does the city want to take in dealing with those issues?
Okay, I just, you know, it's kind of, for me, I needed a refresher, you know, not get bogged down in the details. So thanks for kind of working with me on that. So that's what we're doing, reviewing the house. That's what we're doing, um, reviewing the housing element, sorry, the circulation element. Um, any questions from the council at this point, uh, regarding anything in the, now, go ahead, Miss Kelly?
I just, uh, very quickly wanted to say thank you to the planning commission and, uh, Trevor for all the great progress on this, because this is. I, I read through it today and it's really, really come together. Um, I did have one question, Trevor, we were working on the park, parking study a few years ago, did that get completed in twenty-twenty-one? And did you use that to inform the parking, uh, part of this?
Yeah, good question, uh, not yet, so we got an extension on the SB two funds, which was really good. Um, it was so, and Jennifer's been really helpful this summer and doing. Way more parking counts than we were able to get before, um, so she's been really helping out with that, so it was nice, so we got another summer. Summer plus of, of parking count data, um, that's non-COVID, so, you know, our, our previous couple of summers were, were a little bit odd, so. Um, now that Labor Day is passed, um, I'm gonna start compiling that data and putting together the report, so that is not done yet. But it will be incorporated into the circulation element when it's ready.
Okay, that's great, and then the figures were just updated, this is a little bit of a detailed question, but figure twelve. Are the, the benches on the map, have, has that been updated in the re, I'm sorry for the detailed question, you guys, but, um. I think it would, if they had been updated, that would be good to share with the tribal committee, because I think Jack was looking at getting an inventory done, so. Just trying to cross-pollinate.
So actually, I just got, um, from Commissioner Hakenin, he had volunteered to ground truth that map, because, because those had not been updated since, I think, twenty-eighteen. And I just got that from him today, so, um, we do need to make some updates to those bench and bike rack locations.
Okay, and then my last question is, um, do you, have you gotten, um. Enough feedback or feedback from the tribal entities on, on either this portion of the general plan or the general plan in general? Are you getting good feedback?
N- no, not, not really, um.
Okay.
You know, some, we do have attendance at the planning commission meetings from, um, both, both Sherry, um, often, and, and Jackie as well attends, um, the meetings. So that, that will be something we will need to focus on in the future, um, under our LCP update grant that we're just getting started on. We're gonna finish drafting the cultural and historic resources element. And I just sent out letters on, on Friday asking the tribal entities, um, to. Um, set aside some time and figure out a process for meeting with me to, to finish drafting that element. Um. So I'm hoping that can maybe be done on a more informal staff level basis, as opposed to the. Formal government-to-government consultation, so at some point, I would also like to get some informal feedback on the entire general plan when it's together. And then towards the end of this process, the city council will also need to conduct formal government-to-government consultation with the tribes on the entire general.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I, can I ask a question? So I, I agree, I agree with our mayor that this is, should be considered a working document. And I was wondering if you could share it with the residents as soon as you can, perhaps before you share it with the, um, uh, the coastal commission? So that we can get a sense of that the priorities, the residents are reflected in the document?
I'm sorry, you said the priorities of the resident, I just wanted.
The priorities of the residents.
Okay.
I think you understand.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I, uh, there was a little noise, and I just wanna make sure I hear it correctly, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I think the, you're, you're absolutely right, this should be a working document, and we should, you know, give it a good. Review by the residents as we're developing.
Absolutely.
I would en, I would encourage you to attend planning commission meetings, because that's where.
Yeah, I, I just sent a message about half hour ago to Gabe, asking you, when are your meetings?
They are on the third Wednesday every month, so we'll be meeting, uh, next Wednesday, and we'll be talking about the noise element. Um, like I said, unfortunately, the most current versions are not available on the website, um, unless you can. You can probably find some of them in, in the planning commission packets, but right now.
Yeah, you, you, so you'll have to have another mechanism to share it. Um, my concerns at the moment are, are traffic flow and as well as light pollution.
Well, uh, we'll be, I'll be bringing the community design element back to the city council next month, or maybe the following month, depending on your agenda, and that. The, does discuss lighting.
And I assume you have, um, Zoom access?
For the planning, for the planning commission meetings?
Correct.
Yes, actually, we're still fully Zoom, um, we might try a hybrid. Form, this pri, uh, hybrid format at the next meeting if staff is available for that.
Okay, so Gabe, can you make a note that I get, uh, that link?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. West?
I looked at this whole, um. Oh my gosh, there's a lot to look at. But I found it really easy to read and also really some very nice points, and really, I went through it and I felt like. I wanna work on. I just think it was, was very nicely put together and, and, uh, points out a lot of good things. Thank you very much for working on this in the planning commission, I, I thought this. A plan. I, I wanna go back to one thing that we talked about before, it comes to the end, it's called, is the annexation, and I just would like to, again, go back and have you explain. You know, I've got the idea that annexation sort of is, is a long layoff, it's not a, something we're even thinking about at this point, but it comes up. Repeatedly in the last few pages, I thought maybe you could explain where that comes in, if that's just something that's sort of a.
Yeah, I think, um, that's a good question, and the city hasn't, um. The city council hasn't talked a lot about annexation recently, the city hasn't really been looking at that, but we are starting to look at that. A, a little bit more with this general plan update. Um, you know, I, I think there hasn't been a lot of, um. I don't think desire for expanding the city either from inside the city limits or outside city limits, but I think. You know, Trinidad is pretty small to function as a city, and so I think annexation should, it should be considered. Um, in, in terms of, um, you know, increasing housing opportunities, increasing, um. Population to serve on councils and commissions, um, you know, in, potentially improving the, the tax base for the city. Um, but then the city provides more services, and then for the people outside the city. You know, it's, city government is much more responsive than the county government, so there are, you know, a lot of people think that they don't want the, the oversight from the city, but I, I think there are some advantages to, to, to residents that. Um, you know, we, we should, we should look at that, so, and there is, uh. Actually, a potential, um, there are a couple of properties on Lanford Road that are split, um, by city limit lines. And so there might be a request for annexation, and I think the city should look at, if you look at that figure fourteen, it would be sub-area A. Um, and, and the, I think the city should look at annexing that whole area if. If there's a request to annex a couple of properties in that area, it's kind of an island now, um, and it would make sense to have that in the city.
Thank you. And I know we had, uh, also, uh, needed to consider water availability for annexation, so adding more customers, uh. And so that's just, I, I just throw it out there, because this, I'm, I'm looking at the water system, just reminded me of it, so. We had three different sections to consider for annexation, all of them sort of north and east a little bit of, of the downtown area, so. Uh, or no, sorry, one was south, uh, but anyway, we will, um, and I, if I'm not mistaken, too, it's really up to the council. To keep referring back to something like this too, because there's quite a bit of information here about initiatives that have been suggested about public comment. For agenda, I just, really, it's on us to, to keep tapped on this as well. Um, so I, I wanna echo what folks are saying, this is a really useful document, a really, really useful document.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, right now, our general plan is over forty years old, it's, it's really inadequate. Um, but because everything has to go through the coastal commission, it's, it's a difficult process to update, but I'm hoping that. Once we do get through this update, that we can, you know, every few years, updated as needed, as opposed to waiting forty years again.
Uh, any closing comments, I guess, from the council for, uh, this element? Okay, any, any closing public comment on this? And then Jackie.
Maybe there was something I didn't completely understand, but I thought that on page fourteen, in section that dealt with parking. They were talking about, um, parking in the harbor area, uh, that if somebody were to buy a property in the harbor area, they had to provide, uh. Parking, if I understood it correctly, I may not have, but I thought, and Jackie is here, in fact, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that the, uh. Trinidad Rancheria had taken most, if not all, of the harbor property into trust, which would mean that the city doesn't have any say in something, as to what goes on there. So anyway, that's my comment.
I'm looking at page fourteen, um, other parking initiatives, consider partnering with landowners inside the city limit with large vacant, underutilized parcels, such as the rent. Is that where you're, that jog of memory? Okay, and I think that's what I'm really referring to, is that this thing here is sort of a, a repository for all future engineers. Or not all, but many future engineers. And so if, this is, these are parking initiatives, it's not necessarily in the general plan that we're going to do this, it's just things that have come up through public comment, through. Comments to the commission or to the council. So, Carson, you wanted to?
Thank you, Mayor, and. Um, I more than likely may have missed an invitation to consult, I'm not sure, Trevor, if you sent this out in a recent. Round for final comment or not, but I apologize, I've been a little out of commission for the last four months. Um, but there are some sensitive areas in here. And so I would appreciate a, uh, an opportunity for the Rancherid to be able to have a dialogue at least, I don't know that we need to. From that, but, um, the significant issue of the interchange is one thing. And agreed, there, you know, very definitely could, I don't think there're gonna be negative impacts, but it could increase traffic. To the city, and I think that's something that we should talk about. Um, and then also the harbor area that Eli just mentioned. And we did move to put the, um, property into trust, and that was approved by the VIA area director, Amy Dutchke. And within the thirty-day notice period, there's an opportunity for appeal, and that decision was appealed, and so it's in an appeal process now. With something called the Interior Board of Indian Appeals, and that's in Washington DC, and I can't even remember now how long it's been. Since that appeal was filed, I wanna say it was twenty-twenty maybe, or twenty-one, I'm not sure, I've gotta go back and look. But, um, until that appeal is heard and that board rules, and it's not officially in the trust yet. Uh, we are doing the stormwater project at the harbor, and there's gonna be some improvements to the striking in, in the crosswalk. We're talking about with the coastal commission from the boardwalk across to the lighthouse area. And then, uh, also talking about some pedestrian pathways towards dock. Uh, along the fence there or something, I don't know what that's gonna look like yet. But, so we're, we're definitely trying to address parking. Um, we would like to also, uh. Wire grant funding to pay the dirt parking lot. And that would be a collaborative project with the city for your, your portion, your right of way there. Um, so you know, there's a few things I've noticed in the circulation element that could be further fleshed out and discussed. Um, the Ranchery has a lot of sensitivity to the water issues, as you well know. Um. We. Know it's hard to hear the, the policies about considering expanding water services. I mean, I know it's a policy, and it's like just kind of a placeholder, but, you know, we're gonna be embarking on a. Uh, twenty to forty million dollar project to secure water, because of the city's inability to. Agree to provide additional water based on water shortages, so, you know, I, I think there's enough in here that I would request more time. Um, and I'm happy to make that request formally now for government to government, or I can start with Trevor and I talking with a representative from the council, however you'd like to do that.
I, I believe in, in, you know, staff level, uh, communications, just to start, really to lay down all the different talking points, and then when, when. Decisions at a government, the government level are needed, then we'll bring that together.
Okay.
That'd be my recommendation.
Am I, am I really throwing a wrench in your timeline and your process? By asking to delay?
This wasn't an action item, but I, I am ready to submit these elements again to the coastal commission for, for review and comment, but then it's. It's we, but we can, um, discuss the element while that, while they're doing their thing, because they're gonna take a very long time. Um, so we can work on that in the meantime, and then, then when it gets back from the coastal commission, we can put all, all the comments together.
Okay, that sounds great. So I guess I'll, I'll reach out to Eli and Trevor, and we'll try and get a date on the calendar and have a conversation to start with.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Any other public comment on the circulation element? All right, Trevor, do you have enough from us in terms of direction and whatnot? Glad to see that the, the initial stages of, uh, meeting with the staff level, with the Rancherid has started, and you're, um. So I just wanna be clear that it's okay to send this off to the coastal commission, knowing that we're gonna also simultaneously.
I think, I heard it, it is a living document, a living document, there's still opportunity to edit and make comments, which is all I need.
Great, okay, thank you very much for that discussion.
And may need to come back to council, and you can do that in an open session, if you need to, or just request it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
After I report to our tribe council.
Right. All right, item number three, presentation discussion regarding the housing element, zoning ordinance update, and leak grant task. Back to you, Ms. Parker.
Sure, thank you, so, um, the housing element has several implementation. Measures in it, um, to bring the zoning ordinance into better compliance with current state law, and so this. This amendment, um, takes. A few of those on, um, these are some of the more minor ones. Basically, um, updating definitions, adding definitions for new things that didn't exist in nineteen seventy-eight or nine, when this was, the zoning ordinance was adopted. Um, and clarifying things or residential uses as required by state, so. Most of them are pretty straightforward, um, just following state law, I provided a, a summary of all the, the different. Um, types of uses and, and definitions that were added and, and changed, so. Just some highlights, um, employee housing, family daycares, uh, residential care facilities, those are all, and transitional housing, those are all things that the state considers. Residential uses, so I added definitions that were, um. Compliant with state law, and then added those as allowable uses in, in residences, just subject to the same, same requirements as for a single-family residence. So that's just bringing those up to state law, uh. The one that ha, that has a little bit more flexibility, um, is the single-room occupancy unit, so the city has a little bit more flexibility to, to regulate those. Um, those have been added as an allowable use in the planned development zone, all uses in the planned development zone require a use permit, so. Uh, any single-room occupancy units would have to go through a public review process. And these are small, you know, one or two-room kind of units, they're often converted from hotels, I don't know that anybody would ever. I don't know that anybody would ever propose something like that in Trinidad, but this, this provides that option. And, um, the number and density would be limited by septic requirements, wastewater treatment capacity. And, and again, through, through the public review process and, and use permit findings as well. Um, so the, the planning commission did, uh, review these at a couple of hearings and then recommended that the city council, um, adopt these amendments, the zoning ordinance. Um, and then, so if, if the plan, if the city council chooses to, we would set this for a first reading at, at the next meeting. And then after it's adopted by the city, it would have to go to the coastal commission for certification before going into effect.
Thank you for that. I do have a, if I may, jump in with a question about recreational vehicle or RV. So I know that in the past, there's been some question about the trailer park across from Murphy's and whether or not that is, how that is zoned and, and what is it considered? And so I'm reading the, the amendment here, recreational vehicle RV needs a motorhome trader, travel trader, truck camper, camping trader, and so on. Is this, without getting too far into the details and the leaks on this, is this amendment enough to clarify, uh, the use of our, our trailer park across from Murphy's?
No, so this amendment is not going to affect, uh, the RV parks. Um, that is a little bit larger issue. Um, and I think that, you know, we have to work with, I've, I've been trying to get some information from the coastal commission as well as, uh, RV parks and mobile home parks are also regulated by the state, um, department of housing and community development. And so it's been a little confusing figuring out where the jurisdiction of the city is, where the jurisdiction of the state is. Um, but yeah, those are, both the RV parks are zoned for visitor services, which is a transient use. Um, but they have come slowly over time, converted to more permanent residents and, um, but, but the, but visitor services is a priority use under the coastal act. And so that is, you know, it, it is a bit of a conflict with our existing zoning. Uh, this amendment will not address that issue.
Okay. And again, I'm not like trying to target anything or just, it's an example of how the document can be used. So we, if we can come back to the finer details of that later. Are any questions or comments from the council or Trevor on this one?
Quickly. It looks to me that it's almost, as you were saying, well, almost requirement for me to be in this document. I didn't see a lot of, sort of looking at change anything that were, the changes you had made. Almost all state requirements, is that right?
Pretty much, yeah. Um, like I said, these are all, the only one you really have, you know, wiggle room in terms of how you regulate them are the single room occupancy units. Um, otherwise, these are all just bringing the, the definitions and allowable uses, um, into compliance with state law.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? All right, any, uh, public comment on the housing element? Bringing it back to the council then, I believe we're just reviewing and giving direction, which since it is really just bringing this, this up, up to code or up to, uh, currency, it sounds like we can have a first reading of this ordinance in a, a future council, right? That's the next plan or next stage of the plan? So that's a question for you, Trevor.
Yes, that would be, that would be my recommendation is unless the, uh, city council wants to look at making some changes, then I would set it for a first reading at the next available meeting.
So let's talk about this, uh, councilors, do we have a motion to move this to a first reading in the future?
A second?
All right, we have a first from Wes, a second from Kelly. All those in favor?
Hi.
All right. Very good. So we will, uh, this will be a future agenda item, um, the treaty of this ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor. Okay, so the ordinance will be named and everything was. Moving on then to item number four, discussion decision regarding proclamation declaring September as septic system awareness month and introducing septic soon. Wait a minute, I thought we meant the drawing. Eli, can you introduce this, please?
Yes. The city has been striving to, uh, get all of our septic systems properly inspected and permitted. We've been able to do that with, uh, all of the SDR units and also with all of the new residences, um, when, when there is a change of ownership. But, uh, we have in the past worked with some residents and we also, um, got responses from some and didn't get responses from others. So as a result, uh, Jennifer from our staff and put together this septic Sue program. And, uh, and we're basically launching it. Some letters have gone out, thirty five letters went out to this first group. And, uh, we've already got one third of those, um, that have, uh, completed their inspections and are having the current permits issued. Uh, so we're already on a roll. There's a table in there, um, that shows the various, the status of the various permits, uh, the current permits that we have, uh, permits that have expired, the undeveloped, the almost a permit, and then the no permit. So, um, we do have Jennifer present here and she is willing to help answer any questions. And then, uh, you know, possibly, uh, make some comments. But, uh, whatever, you know, if you want to say a few words, go ahead. Otherwise, we can turn it over and, and have you answer questions.
I do because it's going to drive me nuts. What is undeveloped?
Undeveloped are the, sorry, undeveloped are the, uh, undeveloped parcels within the, um, city limits. They do not require
So, okay.
Septic.
That makes sense. I just want to make sure it seemed, it seems to offer plenty of, you know.
Yes.
All right, uh, any comments for us?
I guess not really. So we have two hundred and forty-two parcels within the city limits. Within those, we have the pie chart. And then there's the breakdown. So we have, thank you. So we have two hundred and forty-two parcels within the city of Trinidad. Nineteen percent of those are undeveloped, so we're not really worried about those right now. Then we have, um, twenty-two percent of those are already permitted, so we don't need to worry about those. We have seventeen percent are in an almost permitted category, which means that they have went through all the steps before. They just did not actually get a, um, permit issued by city staff. So we reached out to those groups first to kind of say, hey, you did everything you needed to do before. You just didn't get a permit issued, so let me touch base with you again and see, do you want to just, you know, let me touch base with you again. You're almost there. So of that, that's what Eli was talking about. Those are the groups and keep that. What did you say, Eli, again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, uh, thirty-five letters that you sent out, the one third of them have already completed.
Gotten their septic inspection again. Um, just Trevor's issuing those permits again, so they're all underway. Um, back integrated into the septic program. Uh, next week, the no permit category is going out. That's the twenty-one percent of the two hundred and forty-two percent or of the two hundred and forty-two parcels. Those are going out. Those people are, those parcels either recently are changing residents or either never got the letters before or got the letters and chose not to comply, one of the two. So those letters will go out. Everyone is being given the opportunity to comply under the old fee schedule before the, um, the rates increase in twenty twenty-three. Um, so those are going out next week. So they will all have the opportunity to get their septic inspections, septic inspections done. And then we have the permit expired category. They, uh, technically, we're not going to be integrated until next year, until twenty twenty-three. However, then we realized, well, they also should be integrated into the program and given the opportunity under the old fee structure. So we're going to also send them out letters this year, giving them the opportunity to integrate under the old fee structure. So they'll also receive letters in twenty twenty-two, giving them the opportunity to integrate into the program this year. So basically, I mean, in a nutshell, everyone within Trinidad has the opportunity to integrate into the program this year under the old fee structure. And the program should be fully up and running by next year. Everyone has the opportunity to integrate under the current fee structure. And as Kate presented, um, during the budget presentation in June and July, we know that the structure is going to go up for twenty twenty-three, which everyone's been advised of. So we're letting everyone know that the fee structure is going up as long as they make their appointments, the, um, as long as they make their appointments scheduled this year because, um, the preferred septic providers do run into a bit of a impacted time crunch here towards the end of the year. So I'm going to be kind of trying to work with our residents also so they can at least get them scheduled by the end of the year. You know, even into next year. So I'm going to be working with our residents as much as we can to schedule them into next year as long as they can integrate into our program in a timely manner. And integrate them into the program as possible.
So, um, I know that my permit expires next month. Is there, uh, does the city have the ability to identify everybody whose permit expires in October twenty twenty-two and back up to July twenty twenty-two and say, hey, your permit's going to expire in October moving forward? Is there a way to get on top of this three month notice so that folks have time to, you know, scrap up a few pennies and get their permit together and whatnot? Get the inspection, get the, whatever they need to do. Is that a possibility that the city can do that?
Yep. Well, going into twenty twenty-three, so what will happen is we will, um, do thirty day notices.
Okay.
Um, going into twenty twenty-three. So what will happen is you will get a thirty day notice. So if your permit is expiring, say in July twenty twenty-three, you will get a notice in June.
And this is just me thinking out loud.
Okay.
I would, I would ask for a sixty day notice because it takes me forever to do something. And I think two months is enough time unless folks think that, you know, then you could just forget it in a month. I don't know, but, uh, thirty days is, again, given the fact that the septic companies are limited in their abilities to get out and inspect and get the pump or whatever.
Can I add anything?
Yeah.
So, so, um, when you say thirty days, we're talking that they, how does that work? So I, you send those out, they have to get, they have to get their Steve Septic whoever and get them out there and have a pump within time. But yeah, I know, and I, I know very well a little bit about septic systems now. Has the next time come over, you can help dig up my backyard and bring it into the field and.
Don't put that in that screen.
That would stink. But I'm kind of curious about the process then. So if they, they require, you get a notice, they have a month. Seems that they're back and they can't get, what kind of a process, what do you have that you do to help the customer? Make sure if they are trying to work towards getting things done, that they
As long as you're working towards a solution and you're in contact with me and in contact with Steve Septic and we are working towards meeting that deadline, as long as we're in contact, everything is good. As long as you're responding to the city and keeping in contact with us, then then things are perfect.
So what Steve's question is, is that month, you don't really need two months, but maybe it was a month to get back to the city and say, I'm working on this, we're trying, we're trying to get.
Exactly. So I guess an answer to his question is, I don't, I'm open to that feedback. I guess I don't feel like necessarily we need sixty days because the month is going to vary and it's going to be ever changing. So each year inspection month, well, this year it may be June. In five years, your month may be August. In five years down the road.
Got it.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's fine with me. And that's fine with the city. It's just, you need to be working towards that date.
And that was the spirit of the other one, the sixty days. So that's fine.
The spirit of the intent.
Yep, yep.
It's just, you're not dropping in the trash can and ignoring me.
Never.
Never.
But we know we're smarter than that.
Because I know where you live.
I have one other question.
I don't know where you live though, so I'm just going to have to figure that out.
Keep it that way.
You're not, you're not safe.
You don't want me to know where you live. I don't. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So when you get the letter, letter, you're acting on it and you're taking action and you're.
It's all about managing expectations. And we know that we have thirty days and it's on us to, to act accordingly. That's really what I was, was getting at is that we're building the capacity of everyone to, to respond within these thirty days. If they don't already have it on their own.
Yeah, because Sue's coming after you.
I know. All right, other questions?
I have one other question. Is, is everybody on a five year plan and is this, they, it consistent or is there other things you can change that?
No, not necessarily. It's on, normally we give a two and five year schedule depending on the type of system you have. Your septic, maybe, is Trevor still on the call?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm here. Uh, yeah, for most residential systems, it's going to be three to five years. Um, you know, there's a lot of older, smaller systems in the city. So, uh, some people have, uh, for those older systems, it's a shorter inspection schedule. Um, and then the newer systems get the five years. Um, for commercial systems or non-standard systems, it's, it's more of a, a two to three year permit because those have to be maintained and inspected more often.
All right, thank you very much, Jennifer, for, for spearheading this. And so our proclamation is in our city package. Um, and it is, uh, it's very inclusive here. So if you like to sort of paraphrase, uh, so proclaiming September nineteen to twenty-three, uh, septic smart week, proper septic system use and routine, uh, care vital to avoid epoxy repairs that can result from neglect. And the city policies with state legislation enacted coastal resources and so on. Uh, the ordinance was developed to assure septic systems are properly operated, regularly inspected, routinely managed. The ordinance was developed to assure septic systems are properly operated, regularly inspected, routinely maintained. And monitored to prevent poor functioning or failed systems to protect public health. Wastewater professionals in Humboldt County use their expertise in the design, installation, maintenance and regulation of the systems in Trinidad. The EPA septic smart program used by the city of Trinidad educates homeowners about the need for proper septic system. Paying tribute to a former council member credited with making septic system maintenance a city priority. In the late nineties, the EPA's Septic SAM was redesigned and renamed Septic Sue, giving the residents of Trinidad a familiar face. To connect with and the city will continue the ongoing effort to connect the residents and businesses to policies, programs, services. That encourage proper use of systems and increase their lifespan. Therefore, being resolved, the city council hereby proclaims the week of September nineteenth through twenty third. Twenty twenty two a septic smart week and urges all Trinidad area residents to join special services. Very nice. So do we have a motion to approve this proclamation?
I'll move to, to. Make September twenty, nineteen to twenty third, two thousand twenty two a septic smart week. And we, they're new to septic soon. And is that what happens to all former mailings?
Do we have a second? Well, second half. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much for this discussion and for the hard work.
And I will add, we are doing some educational mailings also in addition to just. Your septic updated, but some, since we have so many new residents in town too, just how to properly care for your septic. A lot of people we have found are on, not used to septic systems. So just kind of how to care for your septic. So we'll be doing a series of. Mailings also throughout, starting in September through probably the first of the year, just how to care for your septic system and. How to update, you know, how to care, prepare for the holidays, how to be water wise. As well, so.
And I can just add that the literature that I get is short for mail order is quite good from the book. Educate the folks staying in my place. A lot of people don't know that an entire city is on septic. So it's, it's a great educational opportunity. So thanks again.
You're welcome.
All right. At this point, we'll move on to item number five, general election calendar update and notice of election. Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This one's quick. I'm happy to say that we're really cruising into the November election process now. We've made it past all of our. Big hurdles and deadlines, but the, the update for September basically is, it's more of like, um. You know, kind of an announcement of encouragement to the candidates. This is when, number one, for myself, as in staff, we're. Going back and forth with the county elections department and proofing the ballots. So that's, we've done all the heavy lifting. Now it's just some of the fine detail. Creating these. Ballots in these voter information councils. But for the candidates, you know, this is an announcement to say that this is when the legal and voters and various institutions are contacting. Me getting in touch with the candidates, wanting to be in touch with the candidates to give them a voice, to be heard. Whether it's, you know, something broadcast on PBS, it could be the Mad River Union wanting to ask questions and. The Q and A process to get you on record that they'll be publishing in the newspapers to allow the community to get to know you if they don't already. So that's happened once. That just happened, I think, this, this past week, legal and voters, I believe. So that's just an announcement for candidates to be on the lookout for these opportunities should we wish to participate. And then last, there was the nominations for public office. So if you go to the post office, if you go to Murphy's, you might see the flyer that has your name on it. The nominee has four, you know, the nominees for public office are the following candidates. He, the, this is pretty much the update for this month. Nothing else. Everybody know publicly that these opportunities exist and the community will get to know you. Getting ahead of the goal for it.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments, somebody? Nice to see all the check marks next to quite a long list of activities. So it's no small thing to, to put a ballot together including measure P. So. Moving on to underground utility update information.
So refresh your browser.
Yeah. We took that. That's okay.
I didn't, this is not a browser. That is from the table.
Oh, is that, I'm sorry. That's my, my bad. Sorry. We, Eli and I deleted that from the page. Sorry.
But I don't want to talk about it. Well, what's next? I can't refresh.
Sorry, having a browser.
That's it. That's it. Oh, well then.
Future agenda item. Future agenda item.
Future agenda item. In addition to the ordinance, the first reading of the ordinance for the housing. Whether a future agenda item, and I, I will say that I know that our October meeting, I will be on the road. Can you lead the meeting? I think leading from Zoom is going to be problematic. Other future agenda items that folks can think of. It looked like we're going to have another item. No, well, she, she was going to, Trevor was saying she may have another element brush over the shit. I'll just like to be there and then I think the planning commission had a little bit more to work on. So that, it's good to see these elements coming back, but other, other agenda items. How about from the general public?
How about from your city manager?
Eli, what would you like to see in the future?
Anton today sent an email to the water advisory committee and when I looked at the list, there's only four members because. We only have one current council member on there, which is Cheryl.
Okay.
So we need a second council member on there.
Okay.
Since Dave Grover resigned.
Okay, so we'll bring that to, we'll point the second councillor to the water advisory.
Water tank, we can get an update on that. We have more.
I, I will check with the THD and, and see what kind of information they have, if they have some information that they'll bring. Yeah.
Well, if you think of any other agenda items, please let your city vote know. But that will adjourn tonight to you. Thank you very much. Refresh that.
Sorry, Seager.